All right, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the Planning Commission public hearing for Thursday, September 25th. Can I start with roll call, please?
Jenna Costa.
Haley Cruz.
AJ Summers.
Bryan Adams.
Hey Lou. Doing roll call?
Yep.
Lou Totoro.
David Box.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, do we have any public comment for something not on tonight's agenda? Before we get started. Great, we'll jump into our first agenda item. This is PL 2025-0080 SSRC and YVMC overflow parking conditional use. Is the applicant here for presentation? No presentation? Okay, great, thanks. And does staff have a presentation?
Hi, I do. Kelly Douglas, Senior Planner.
Before staff gets started. I would like to note that my firm prepared the plan set. I don't anticipate any conflicts of interest, though. I would defer to you guys as to whether or not I should step aside.
I have no problem. I don't think it'll change your judgment, but I'd say being on the, I guess, team that was paid to produce drawings for the applicant, probably a perceived conflict.
Sure, I'm happy to step down.
Whether or not I think you would actually have a conflict. I think it'd probably make more sense and a better precedent to set anyway, if that's okay.
Then I will recuse myself for this one.
We'll see you soon, thank you AJ. Sorry, Kelly.
Oh, that's okay. Uh, yes, Kelly Douglas, Senior Planner. This is a conditional use application before you this evening. The subject property is commonly known as the hospital, UC Health, Yampa Valley Medical Center. It's located on the north side of Central Park Drive. The property is zoned CC, Community Commercial. And the applicant, the ski, Steamboat Ski and Resort Corporation, SSRC, is requesting approval of a surface parking lot conditional use. The proposal is to allow continued use of the existing YVMC parking lot as a surface parking lot for overflow parking during the ski season, seasonally. This is really similar to a, an application at Strings you saw recently also. So if it's ringing a bell, that's why. For this application, there's a total of 262 existing spaces spread over two parking lots that are, you know, connected, but for the purposes of being clear. And no improvements are proposed or development with this application. So it's just use an existing parking lot. The purpose of this application is to document that the surface lot serves two uses, the hospital and overflow ski parking on weekends, and that they do not impede one another. Staff finds the proposal complies with all applicable requirements of the CDC and it's consistent with the conditional use criteria for approval. So we're recommending approval. There's no conditions. As far as public comment, we have not received any in support or opposition to the application. Happy to answer any questions, the applicant's here as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you Kelly. Any questions from commissioners?
Kelly, you indicated there were no complaints?
No, no.
I am curious, I'm looking at, I guess, the Jan Bishop Center. And that's quite a few spaces. I was there today and it was totally full. So I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to how there are no conflicts there.
Good afternoon, Mike Lamont, Director of Development, First Steamboat Resort. We're only using it on the weekends and that center is closed on the weekends.
Okay, so it is just the weekends and.
Saturday and Sunday.
It's closed, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Maybe something of a related question I'll ask you as well. So there's no opportunity to use it during the week even on, say, your busiest weeks of the year then, right? Like this conditional use is only for weekend approval. You don't see any problems with that? There's really no times that the ski area has said, oh man, this Wednesday, because it's the day after Christmas is too busy or this, whatever. Do you see any perceived conflicts that you guys have like that?
We've never explored using the hospital for that reason, just because to lose, excuse me, Commissioner Totoro's point, there's no spaces available during the week on those, those uses.
But historically, you haven't really had an instance where you've already filled up Meadows, Strings, everything, and now you're looking for that even on a weekday?
Most of our overflow days are happening. Just under 100% of our overflow days are happening on the weekends.
Yeah, okay. I think that's all I had, thank you. Anybody else with any questions? Doesn't look like it. And do we have any public comments on this agenda item? No? Do we have any public comment online? If so, you can raise your hand. I don't think we will. In that case, unless you had any final follow-up you wanted to offer? Great, or Kelly?
Uh, no, nothing there.
I'll close our public portion and come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
I have no problem with the plan. It's obviously been working. The fact that it's only on weekends makes a lot of sense. Well, I am, I guess, a little curious, you know, of, obviously, the hospital, I assume hospital gets revenue associated with this. And I don't know if there was any public money that goes into the hospital. Probably should have asked that question before, but given this is where we are, I have no, no problem with the plan.
Okay, anyone else for a motion?
I think it's a great partnership versus creating a lot more pavement in town, getting to share a use, I think it makes a ton of sense.
And really no, I don't see any opportunity for there to have been impacts to the surrounding neighbors for this either that I've ever seen, just to add to your points. John, you were gonna.
I always say, their documentation is pretty clear that it's only on weekends, which I assume is just a Friday, Saturday, and the offices are closed. The other offices are closed on those weekends. And so, and it seems like they have just dedicated portions, it's not like the entire area. So it seems like they've been pretty well thought out and I'm, I'm fine with it.
I have nothing to add that hadn't already been said. I'll make a motion. That'd be great. Motion to approve PL 2025-0080. Do I need to read the rest in? Nope, that's okay.
Second.
A motion is second, anybody want to add anything else, discuss? Great, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you for your time. Jump into our, our second agenda item, thanks AJ. Our second agenda item tonight, this is an item for recommendation to council. This is PL 2025-0043, Mount Warner Water and Sanitation District, Walton Creek Lift Station Improvements. Is the applicant here for presentation?
The applicant online too, so he might need to share or unmute or whatever.
Great.
Bo Cahill, I'm a project manager with Mount Warner Water. And we have Jacob's Engineering online as the project engineer and representative who will run through the applicant presentation.
Okay. Just to make sure. Is it Mr. Paquette?
No, it's Bee Shoot, Brad Shoot.
Bee Shoot, okay. We can make sure that he has the opportunity to unmute and can give us a presentation when you're ready.
All right, thanks for having me. I'll share my screen here, let me know if it shows up.
Not yet, anyway. There we go.
All right. Thanks for having me. It's on behalf of the Mount Warner, Water and Sanitation District. We're working on the Walton Creek Lift Station project. And so, I'm Brad Shutt, the project manager. I also have Al Paquette, Client Service Manager, Bo Cahill, with the district, is there in person? This project is to replace the 55-year-old Walton Creek Lift Station. It's located just on the east side of Walton, east side of 40, near the Walton Creek Bridge. We're upgrading the station to meet the Colorado Department of Health and Environment Design Guidelines. So we're adding in overflow capacity and backup power to increase the resiliency and redundancy, and also improving the safety and access to the structure, so. The station, if you see the slides here, right off of 40, kind of by the creek where the star is, is the existing lift station that was constructed around 1971. Here's a picture of the existing lift station. And on the right is the new site plan, so the old station here. This wooden building will be demolished. Once the new station is online, we're keeping the concrete low-grade structure to reuse that as the overflow basin. And the new station will be constructed just to the north of it. It's a little bit wider to allow for better access into the station and to allow for additional overflow capacity. Architectural elevations, you can see here, so we have some stone veneer and cement fiber board to add some architectural features. And we just wanted to keep the same site as the existing lift station. We have sewer coming in from the north, east, and south. So any new site would require a deeper sewer, a creek crossing, or a new land acquisition. A new site would cost significantly much more to design and construct. We are repurposing the old lift station in case of power outage. So we have 30 minutes of storage. And we're also adding a generator. Currently, they would have to run down from the water plant, tow a generator down. So I know in the wintertime, that can be dicey if you happen to lose power. The size is also consistent with a wastewater master plan and impacts, minimizes the impacts to existing customers compared to a new site development. So overall, we were asking for a major variance request. The new building is 21 feet from the west property line off of 40. I know you required 25 feet. We constructed in the setback because there's, because of the existing infrastructure, all the sewer lines coming from various points, existing utilities in the ground, site access. And if we were to move it off the road, we start to impinge on the setback from Walton Creek. Also, the existing building that's been there since 1971 is 19 feet from the south property line versus the 25 feet. It cannot be moved in, cannot be taken offline. So we're just adding this into the application as well. Mitigating for these various requests, we are providing landscaping and removal of the existing building. And there's also a conditional use request. This property is classified as open space. So any utility, I believe, has to have a conditional use request on that. And here's kind of the land, the planting plan, consistent with the community development, plant materials for utility easements. So that's what we're doing to mitigate kind of the request. That's all I had, are there any questions?
We'll go to a staff report first and we'll let you know if we have any after that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Toby, do you have a staff report as well?
Toby Stoffer, Senior Planner. So as was mentioned, this is a development plan with a major variance and a conditional use to add a lift station within the front setback of Highway 40. Property is a little under half an acre. As was mentioned, there's an existing small lift station building and some limited site development. The property is within the floodway and the 100-year flood hazard for Walton Creek and its zoned OR. The new station will replace the existing lift station. The existing station will be converted and a generator will be added in the case of pump failure, as was mentioned, to comply with CD-PHE standards. The lift station is considered an above-ground, is considered above-ground utility infrastructure, which is a conditional use in the OR district. The OR district is intended to provide areas for public and private recreational uses, open space preservation, and other similar uses. It can also accommodate other low-impact uses and may provide a buffer to protect environmentally sensitive areas. While utility infrastructure can have visual or other impacts, this lift station should be similar to what is existing on the property and the impacts from new development should be mitigated by the landscaping. We are supporting this request. The variance is to be 21 feet from the front property line instead of 25. A reduction to the front setback again can be a visual impact inconsistent with other uses or buildings. The location should be compatible with nearby uses and buildings. And again, the additional landscaping should mitigate that impact. And this location does allow for a larger water body setback for Walton Creek. We find that the use is compatible with the community plan. Our community plan calls for efficient use of land, protection of sensitive areas, and efficient infrastructure and public services. This project meets those goals. The utility use also provides a service to the public and protection of Walton Creek in the floodway area. So in that way, it is consistent with the purpose of OR. Again, we don't think that it will have any negative impact on the surrounding properties. The existing building has had little to no impact. So the expansion of that use and this additional building should be the same. This development plan is minimizing impacts from the natural environment by locating as far as they can from the water body setback and providing additional landscaping on both sides of that building. Again, regarding the variance, the existing building is about not so different from 21 feet. It's about 19 feet, as the applicant has mentioned, from the front property line. So again, we don't anticipate any new impacts from the new building in this location. The community plan, as noted regarding the variance, does call for efficient use of land, protection of sensitive areas, and efficient infrastructure. So this project will do that. Mitigation of the variance is through landscaping and protection of the floodplain and the floodway. And we find that this project meets an acceptable alternative. As was mentioned, the property is constrained, constrained by its shape, the existing infrastructure, and by the Walton Creek floodway. So the location of this building does allow the water body setback to be met. So that standard is met as an acceptable alternative instead of meeting the front setback standard. So we do recommend approval with two conditions.
Great, thank you very much Toby. Any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I have one. For staff, does the CDC have any provisions that outline any type of flood protection that a utility such as this located in the floodplain would, I guess, would need?
Yeah, the project also had to receive a floodplain development permit. That usually includes elevating the building above, above the high watermark or the floodplain mark. I'm not sure what that is because I don't administer the floodplain. But this project does have an approved floodplain development permit and will have to be built to that. So it should allow impacts, there should be no impacts to the building from the event of a flood. And they need to demonstrate that there will not be any additional flood hazard because of this building. So by elevating it. But I think those characteristics are evaluated by the floodplain development permit, which is approved.
Okay, and what about the other way around? I think they said they are adding 30 minutes of additional storage in case of an outage. And if that 30 minutes expires, you would expect sewer overflow, which might flow directly into the creek?
Probably the best.
Applicant or staff?
Bo Cahill, Project Manager, Mount Warner Water. So we're adding overflow capacity. So we currently do not have overflow capacity. So we're repurposing the existing station. So if the wet wells and the new station were ever to fill up, we now have overflow capacity that we can spill that sewage into.
Okay, but back to your question AJ, power's out, 30 minutes lapses, what happens?
Brad, I would defer to you to answer that question.
We have a kind of a belt and suspenders with the generator there. We have a diesel generator sized, I think, for at least two to four hours of power backup. So, you know, the first step would be for the generator to kick on. If something were to happen with the generator that didn't come on, we still have 30 minutes. And alarm will be sent to the district so they can respond and see what's going on.
And what about the pump? Is there redundancy in the pumps? Because if the pump goes out, it's going to take more than four hours to replace, I would think.
Yeah, absolutely. The CD-PHE requires a duty standby. So we have, currently we have a duty standby and we do have a third pump in the plan. So we're set with backup and meeting the CD-PHE requirements.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of.
Come to you, John.
I've got a couple of them, actually. The first to staff, were there, have there been any odor complaints or noise complaints?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, then the recipe for the applicant. What is the average daily flow and peak flows in the station?
Average daily flows, Brad, do you have that number offhand?
I, I don't have that number offhand. I could try to dig it up here.
Our entire system during peak days can generally convey about one million gallons per day.
Okay. Okay, so is that the same flow that went through, that goes through the original facility?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And you've indicated that you've got thirty minutes of storage, which is great. Did the old facility have storage?
It did not have storage.
Okay. So is there any odor control in this system at all?
Brad, can you speak to that?
We don't have any odor control. We hadn't had, as I understand, the district hasn't had any odor control complaints with the existing system. This new system is designed to be similar to the existing system, so we assume that we would not have any odor complaints.
The only consideration I would think about is you've got thirty minutes worth of storage, which you didn't have in the old facility. Stored wastewater often has odors. So I do have a little bit of a concern about that. It's the same flows, so the pumps, they're going to sound the same. The facility does not currently have a generator though, does it?
It does not have a generator onsite, so currently, if we had a power issue, a call will go after our staff, and we have a generator shop that we would tow over there and plug into the facility.
Okay.
This plan is proposing to have a generator actually onsite, so our staff does not have to do that.
Which I think is good. Having a generator is good, but like, storage of wastewater, having a generator onsite carries with it some noise considerations, and have those been addressed?
Brad, can you speak to that?
Elf, you want to say too?
Well, I said a couple of things. Hi, I'm Al Pickett. First, the overflow basin we have will be pumped out, you know, so when it overflows, that wastewater won't sit there for a long time. When power is restored, it will be pumped back to the active wet well, so it's not going to be a, you know, always filled with wastewater. It will, it'll be filled and drawn out quickly with it, you know, within the day once everything's restored. And regarding this, the sound or the noise, the generator does include a sound enclosures that will reduce the noise levels to acceptable, an acceptable level.
Thank you.
And you guys can answer this question. The generator is only used during emergency conditions, is that correct?
Correct.
The generator will only run when there's a loss of power. It'll do an automatic transfer, so it will run when there's loss of power, and it will run on a monthly, more of a monthly basis, just for exercising for a few minutes, just to make sure it's reliable for startups.
Great. John, you've been waiting patiently. You had a question?
Yeah, for staff. So Toby, if I understand correctly, because they met the water setback, is that what you're saying is reason for approval?
For the variance, so. The variance standard needs to be met through, either through hardship or through an acceptable alternative. The applicant chose hardship. Staff chose the acceptable alternative, which is that they can meet other code standards that are listed, so they are meeting the water body setback standard instead of meeting the front setback standard, and we find that to be an acceptable alternative for the front setback variance.
I have a slightly different question. On the lighting plan, if I understand correctly, there's going to be two lights for the new structure? Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's what they showed on the plan.
Okay. I looked, it didn't say that the lights were going to be shielded. Are they shielded lights?
They should be downcast. Yeah, and so I don't know if they need to be shielded, but I think that they are downcast, and we looked at the fixtures, and they did meet the lighting requirements.
Right. Can we, can we make them shielded? Is there any?
Let me see if I've got the fixtures in the packet.
They are. They're in the plan, they're in the plan set, last page.
Just, we have a continuation of light pollution, and I know there's only two lights, but, you know, if we can make them shielded, it'd be great.
It may already be. I think we can look at the, look at the fixtures and see.
They are downcast, and pretty much by definition means they're shielded. Otherwise, they would not be downcast. And these ones on the last page would only be able to face downwards, not outwards.
Yeah, I'll share, I'll share it with you. I believe that that was our analysis, what Brian just said there, so. Because they're downcast, they don't require shielding necessarily, but.
Yeah, I see the, you know.
So.
Yeah, I see it, the picture.
Did you have any other questions? What you got there?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Everybody asked all my questions.
Oh, good. Great. Anybody else? So just a clarification, and I think Kelly had had the question to staff that was shared amongst the commission with the answer, which is process is on the plan set. And Toby, onto this for you or the applicant, but Kelly, correct me, but one place it says fifty, fifty-ish feet from the high watermark, one page says sixty feet. Can you describe the differences, why that's, from a layman's term, it looks like a mistake? Why it's not a mistake?
Brad and Al, I would defer to you for that question.
It is a mistake. It's fifty-one feet. I think the sixty-one was to where the water was at the time of the survey in the winter. So we surveyed the site in the time of the winter, and that's what that dimension shows. We believe that it's a little bit closer to the high watermark on the grading plan, so the fifty-one feet would be correct.
Okay, thank you. Toby, does that change staff's recommendation at all?
No, there's still, the property is still oddly shaped, and it narrows where this facility is being located, so there's not enough space to achieve the front setback and the water body setback. Typically, when that happens, we try to preserve the water body setback as much as we can and distance buildings from the floodway as much as we can. So our analysis is the same, that we would prefer this building be closer to the Highway forty mark. There is some space between the actual road, although that's right of way, but we are going to have landscaping in, on both sides, which should mitigate any, any impacts, we believe, visual or to that riparian area.
Great. One more question. If an approval motion is what selected, somebody selects on the commission, should that include a condition for a corrected plan set? Does that need to?
We do have the accurate plan. If we want to update the plans, that's certainly an option. We can get that done before, I believe we can get that done before it gets approved by council.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, one more to the applicant. Do you have any lift stations with odor control at all?
No, we do not. This is the only lift station within the Mount Warner Water system.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
With what control did you say?
Odor control.
Oh, got it, thanks.
Anyone else? We don't have public, so we'll skip public comment. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before we close our?
I do not, no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And anything from you, Toby?
No.
Final questions? Close our public portion, come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
Obviously, I have a concern about odors. I've designed lots of wastewater facilities. Odor control in a facility like this is not necessarily critical, but if there are odors, you are changing the system. You do have storage and may not stay there long, but the risk profile goes up a little bit for odors and odor complaints. It can be handled passively, or it can be handled chemically. So I assume enforcement's going to be by complaint, so if there is a complaint, I'm not sure how it would be addressed. I have no problem with the variances. I don't have a problem with the floodplains. It's obviously important to have lift stations, and at one million gallons a day, that's actually a sizable lift station. So, like I said, other than the odor control, I feel pretty good about it.
So my thought on the odor control was basically that that's basically when they have an emergency, is when you'd actually get some odors out of that. There's not, but, and today, if there was a situation, there is no overflow. There is, I mean, outside of it just overflowing, my understanding, into the river. You know, and so the odor control is basically, you only need it when there's emergency.
Actually, it depends on the nature of the waste. I mean, that's a statement. And I couldn't tell you if there's waste as bad odors or not. It's typically how long the waste stays in the system before the pumps kick on and flow starts. So I can't, I can't say. But I, it raises, to me, it raises a yellow flag, okay, if anything.
So should we consider asking the applicant, if we're, if that's an option, how they can make that yellow flag a green flag? If that's, I mean, this is, you've done this type of work before?
Yeah.
So what, what, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation, I would recommend, I will, I'll support this. I do believe there's a chance that in the future, that there will be a problem, and that obviously is going to end up on Mount Warner in terms of resolving that problem, but it can be resolved. So I'm, I don't think we should hold it up for that reason.
Okay. Thanks for that. Anybody else have any discussion or motion?
Yeah, I'm good with the front variance. I think that's better than the creek variance or the water body setback variance. In the current building, this one's a little bit bigger, but it looks like it's a little bit better tucked in there, and you barely notice the current building as it is, so I'm good with this.
And to support that, their landscape plan is, is successful looking, right? If that's a way to describe a landscape that I think will help as well. There's some definition to it. It's not just a CMU rectangle box being designed. There's some effort that was put in to hide this utility, I think, just to add to your points even. Any other discussion?
I agree with both of you guys. I don't have any major concerns. I'm grateful for some upgrades.
Great. Concur. I would add that while I agree with your point on making sure that what we are recommending to council is very clear on what dimensions we are basing our decisions on, I think that it has already been laid out well enough, both in minutes and even on the correct plan, that I'm not quite sure if it warrants a specific correction, added motion, or anything like that personally, just starting the conversation, but pushing that back to hear how you feel about it. No, I agree. I think they need to correct that anyways. Yeah. And it'll be part of the work as submitted, so I'm good with that. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thanks for asking. Thanks for that. Great. Anybody else, or anybody want to make a motion?
I'll motion to recommend approval of PL 20250043 with two conditions.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Just for the sake of spouting out what we are going through, I think the conditional use makes a lot of sense as it has historically, and that's a big part of it continuing to make sense here, making sure that it is further away from the water body and other utilities that are already there. I see why they asked for the variance that they did, and I think the acceptable alternative criteria makes perfect sense with both staff and applicants' justifications for it, and yeah, that's all the things we were reviewing, so added that for the record. Anybody else? Great, then I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Then that passes unanimously. Thanks for your time. That's it for agenda items. Do we have a director's report this evening?
Yeah, I have a few things to share with you. Just give you some updated numbers. These are not current as of exactly today, but pretty close. So so far this year, we have received about two hundred development review applications, and including your decisions, your two decisions tonight, planning commission has made fourteen final decisions and twenty-seven recommendations to city council so far in 2025, so I think you've been busy. We have approved ninety-two applications administratively. I should say, we should have decided ninety-two applications administratively. Not all of those have been approved. And currently, there are about three hundred and eighty-five projects somewhere in the development review process. I should note, that means everywhere from it got submitted, all the way through review and approval, and then waiting for conditions to be completed before the file gets closed out. So that's a pretty wide process, and that's why that number is so large.
What was that number again?
Three hundred and eighty-five.
Same question, John. I went, that's a bigger number than the other two.
Yeah. I mean, projects take along, sometimes take quite a while to close out, so they're just things that we don't, we're not working on every day, but they're sort of always there, and when they're ready to come back on our desk, we have to pick them back up and finish that workout, so.
Yeah, that's, just to comment on that, because the past week, I've actually had a couple of people comment about not planning, not being responsive enough, but having a number like three eighty-five helps, you know, helps with that responding, so.
Thank you. That doesn't include any building permits. Those are just planning applications, so just keep that in mind. We have opened two hundred and twenty-five code enforcement cases this year. That includes fifty-four building code cases, thirty-six noxious weed cases, and seventy-nine short-term rental cases. We currently have about a hundred and twenty open cases that are pending resolution, so that's a really hefty workload for our two code enforcement officers to manage on an ongoing basis. And as of the first week of this month of September, we had two thousand two hundred and ninety-eight licensed short-term rentals, twenty-seven hosted short-term rentals, and twenty temporary short-term rentals licensed. That number fluctuates all the time as renewals come through, and some expire and some new applications come through. We've also completed a hundred and ninety-five historic preservation reviews this year. That includes both planning applications and building permit applications. So our historic preservation planner has been busy. And then we also have, we're just about ready with a final draft of the historic preservation plan and updated design guidelines that should be on the Engage Steamboat site with, I think, by the end of this week, and we have that scheduled to go to the Historic Preservation Commission and city council for adoption in October. And then also, as you know, the Steamboat Springs Community Plan will be coming your way for a formal recommendation, also scheduled to go to city council for adoption in October.
Back on the historic preservation permits, is that anything that is eligible? That includes anything that's eligible for historic? Is that correct? Is not? Because we don't have that many historic.
So those are reviews, so they're not all, I wouldn't classify those. So they're not all, I wouldn't classify those all as historic preservation permits, but they're reviews of other types of permits. So other planning applications or building permits. And our preservation planner reviews every application for a property that has a building or a structure that's of 50 years of age or older. So some of those are, we review and we determine that they're not eligible resources. Some of them, they are. And that number would also include those that are actually listed on the local register as well. Also, just wanted to mention the landscape code. Bob is working really hard to get that buttoned up and bring that to you all at a work session first. We'll have some stakeholder outreach and public hearings on that, but we're hoping to have that through Planning Commission and City Council for adoption prior to the end of the year. There's a couple of other code amendments that are going to be coming your way. One has to do with EV chargers. And then I think Toby's also working on sort of another routine, routine amendment that does some cleanup and makes some minor changes, trying to get through a list of backlog of code amendments that we're trying to get through. So a lot of code work happening and that'll all make it here before Planning Commission in the next couple of months. And then lastly, I just wanted to note with regard to some housing work, we have EPS under contract. They're a consultant, the consultant group leading the development of our Inclusionary Zoning and Feasibility Study, linkage feasibility study. They've just wrapped up sort of the existing market conditions analysis as well as some case studies of peer communities that have similar regulations. And they're, we have finally obtained an important data set that we were waiting on from the state. So they'll be kicking off the actual Nexus study. That's the study that's necessary to establish the relationship between new development and affordable housing impact. So that study is a prerequisite to us moving forward with adopting any type of regulatory standards for housing projects. And we are planning to have an update on that project come before council at their December work session. So if the council at that time gives us the green light to continue moving forward on that at some point, Planning Commission will be getting involved in that conversation as well.
Can you touch on the design guidelines?
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask that.
As long as you're touching on all the other ones.
Yeah. As soon as we can get this landscape code amendment buttoned up and adapted, we are, and in fact, I think as we, once we get it sort of like scheduled for actual hearing dates and we're confident we can keep that moving forward, we're going to start kicking off the design standards rewrite project, so.
Because you've already engaged the consultant.
Yeah, we have the consultant under contract. We have the budget appropriated. We just need to have the capacity to get to it. So that is absolutely first priority to get moving on.
Yep. Does that work with like the new area master plan and potential, you know, misalignment between that and current code? Like, are you guys, do you guys have capacity to try and make those updates soon? Or is that part of the plan with those new updates? Or?
So all of the code updates that I just mentioned were sort of already in the works and planned prior to the community plan update. There are definitely going to be some implementation steps that we will want to take beginning next year to get moving on like some of the high priority first steps and implementations. So we hope to have that capacity. We have, we hope to have some funds budgeted with the approved budget. We're not there yet, so more to come on that. But certainly, we intended to not put the plan on a shelf, but try to start implementing as soon as we can, so. And I would say, you know, I think the design guidelines update will be, I mean, it will, it will be an implementation of that as well. I mean, we had it in the works prior, but certainly that'd be forwarding any of the recommendations that come out of the community plan as well.
Cool.
Thanks.
Question, procedural question. The historic preservation changes you mentioned, does that come to this body also? Or what's the, what's the steps for approval?
Yeah, so the historic preservation plan and the design guidelines are going to go to the Historic Preservation Commission for recommendation and then they'll be adapted by city council. So those aren't code amendments. There are definitely some recommendations in the plan that will result in us probably bringing some code amendments forward. And when that happens, we'll work with HPC to get to a draft and then it will come through Planning Commission because that is the formal process for CDC code amendment, text amendments. Yep.
And since you already have momentum with that, would you imagine that you'll be drafting that soon after? Is there bandwidth for that as well?
Preservation code amendments? Yeah, I think there's a lot of stakeholders sort of eager to see some changes. And I know Caitlin, our preservation planner, has, there's sort of some low hanging fruit that we think we can tick off pretty quickly. Of course, you know, I sort of hesitate to say that because you never know what public feedback will come out and, you know, how that process will go. But certainly, our intention on that plan as well is to not let it sit on the shelf, but start implementing right away. And the way that that plan is drafted, it lays out sort of some immediate priorities, more midterm and longer term priorities, so.
So I can't let you leave without making an STR comment. My understanding is that those, the STR changes that the council, City Council approved really doesn't impact anything that would come before the Planning Commission? Or does it?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm curious, I guess you said 200 applications?
What, I'm sorry, what are you referring to?
Yeah, I assume for development planning.
Oh, you mean for the year? Yeah, 200 new development.
I compared to last year at the sun.
That, I can tell you exactly. Hold on one second. Last year, total applications in 2024 that we received is 244.
For the entire year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're, well, almost 10 months, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I would expect, you know, we usually get some towards the end of the year. You know, we're not far off. It's been a pretty similar year this year in terms of workload, complexity of projects and number of projects that we saw for the last two years. 2023, we had 251, so.
It might be indicative of flattening of demand, so to speak.
I actually, if I go back and look at longer trend data, the sort of development review planning applications has not drastically changed in a while. Because even during COVID, when things felt like they were supposed to slow down, what we saw were fewer big projects and a lot of little projects, lot combinations, lot splits. You know, just like, so like, when you're just looking at sheer numbers, we don't, there hasn't been a ton of variation, I would say, in the last 10 years, frankly. It's harder to measure in numbers sort of complexity and scale of project. That's like a little bit harder to track.
Yeah, so you can't correlate to number of units that are being built.
I don't have that data called out. Certainly, I think the building permit, the building department tries to track some of that through their permitting process, but I don't have that data on hand.
But they can track valuation and, you know, of size of projects and things like that to really give you a sense more of magnitude, which is, of course, valuation has inflationary issues with it. But if you can account for that, you could get a lot of information from them.
Well, I mean, I would assume something like the Stockman is very large with a lot of units that we wouldn't have had in the last couple of years. You know, so I can understand that. And I did want to follow on with what John asked on.
Lou, speak into your microphone.
Oh, that's, that's what I'm saying, okay.
It's been like six weeks since you've heard that.
Yeah, I know. I just want to follow up on what John had asked about the council's decision. I guess it doesn't really have an impact on what we see, but does that have an impact on what you all are doing? You know, in the planning department itself?
I mean, yes, and, yes, it has an impact. So essentially, what council did was they provided some direction to our legal team in terms of like prosecuting levels of fines. They have given direction that on a first offense, they would like the mandatory two-year ban to not be mandatory, but instead to be, that we offer a deferred judgment so that two-year ban will be deferred. So if they don't have any violations within that two-year period, the ban, you know, they don't, they're not subject to the ban. So it, and then in addition to that, they've asked that we provide some additional notification for renewals so that people have more notice that their license is coming due for renewal as well as that it expires. So we're making those changes. And then I think probably what really was the bulk of the discussion and the decision that council made was whether to give folks sort of a second chance at getting a license. There was, if you followed the conversation, there were about 25, 27 properties that had valid VHR permits in 2022 when the ordinance was adopted and went into effect. A good number of those folks never got an STR license. They thought they were sort of good to go. Some people got the STR license the first year, but then failed to renew it. And the VHR, the VHR permits were like, like when they expired, you lost your ability to get another STR license. It's a little bit different than legal non-conforming status where you have that 12-month abandonment period. So if you have an STR license and you're legal non-conforming and you forget to renew, as long as you haven't abandoned the use, you can actually apply and get a new license. VHR permits were different. They were like, if you failed to renew, you didn't have, you lost your eligibility to get a new license in the red and yellow zone. So council decided to give this certain, specific subset of folks sort of a second chance. So we've opened up a 60-day window for them, if they're interested, to apply for a new STR license. And we're in that window now. So that ordinance went into effect on, I think, yesterday. And so all of those notices went out yesterday. So we got a lot of phone calls. So does it affect what we're doing? Yeah, we're getting a lot of phone calls. We're going to be processing some new licenses. But hopefully, all in all, it'd be a good improvement, process improvements to provide some more notice. And hopefully, we'll have fewer folks failing to renew.
Thank you.
Yep.
Informative director's report. Any other questions for? Great, thank you very much. We don't have any meeting minutes or old business. So does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, we're adjourned at 5:00.